And I'll let him speak to that. I think that may not be allowed, but that's where I would like to be. But, you know, I don't, I live here, so I don't want to be a community that's known for taking advantage of businesses. We're hoping that the language is something that we can go with.
Dave, what kind of timeline are you looking at with the Eagle line? And I understand all of it.
Well, first off, our timeline, we want to, we're on schedule to build Phase One next year. So, but it will be, it'll be many months before we get an answer from Eagle. The hydraulic analysis will take a couple of months. And then they, ever since COVID came, I mean, things are just really taking a long time to get approved. So it's going to be several months. But like I said, I've been working with Lara for 10 years on this project.
So you're looking at this phase being built in 2023, correct?
Yeah.
And the Eagle thing, probably not, no permit until at least 2023?
Right. If I get a permit by the end of the year, I think we'd be lucky. So, you know, and this is a relative, I mean, we've got a lot of other challenges along this route that we haven't even gotten into. But I think most of them, we're going to be able to deal with just from an engineering standpoint. This is more of a property rights issue. And we're certainly not suggesting anything but cooperation on condemnation or anything like that. So I think what Andy has proposed to the commission and to Grand Rapids gravel are two versions of a condition. The way I read it, one said, we can't get an easement, you will work with us to find a route through your property. And the other one said, basically, we'll work with you to the extent that we can and find something mutually acceptable, but it doesn't commit them to a route. Of course, we prefer the first one. James, I prefer not, that you don't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Appreciate it. James, would you come on up and give us your name and then go through the the latest information that you have concerning, you know, the houses and as far as most of the application, obviously, we've located already. So we're looking at the new, kind of new portions of it and obviously the trail situation as you see it.
I might get out of your way. James Stike, owner of the building, Grand Rapids gravel. Like has been said, it's pretty much the same application we're looking to put in at 22 and a half roughly acre late. Mine the gravel underneath of it. Over a 10-year period, after that's done, we have an end use plan put together. We realize the market changes in 10 years and it could go from single-family housing to condominiums to et cetera. But some sort of residential use there on the lake. We'll have to rezone it from industrial to residential at that point. But that's where, that is, gravel is a natural resource. It's obviously very valuable. Becoming more and more valuable as more and more houses get built where gravel is underneath. You can't knock down businesses or houses. Proximity to metro areas is becoming a thing where now we're going farther away from our primary use will be for our concrete plants. And this is further east than any of our concrete plants, so already trucking is becoming an issue, but it's the cost of business. So that's where we aren't able to offer something that would limit the amount of gravel that we can take out of an area. It's a natural resource. It's protected under Michigan law, and that's where that is. The real big change from the previous applications, we approached, there was, we have a duplex on the west and a single-family home on the east. We had sent a letter in late 2020 or early 2021 to the residents saying, hey, we're going to have to end your lease because we're going to mine. Part of the conditions was, we'll have to be out. Didn't hear anything back, but since we didn't have our Eagle permit yet or gravel discharge permit, we just didn't want to kick somebody out for no reason. And then come when we finally got, now we have our Eagle permit for the lake, we have our Eagle permit for the groundwater usage, we have our Eagle permit for the groundwater discharge. We then approached them and said, you're going to have to leave, and they didn't want to leave. Do you realize the gravel pit's going behind you? Yep. They still want to leave. And to me, it's, if you understand what it is and if it's, we can put up the burns and have that safety data concern to us with the fence. If you want to live there, but and it's five years down the road before we have to get the gravel underneath there. And if you are happy with where you're living, I'll go to the lake commission and ask them, they'll all deal with it. And then the same thing with that single-family house at East. Somebody was living in it. They moved overseas to teach English. And then we have a guy that works for us ironically, who has an apartment in Grand Rapids, close to the gravel pit that he works at now. And he said, well, I'm just going to move, get an apartment in the wall. And I go, and he asked about the house. I go, well, we can ask if that house can stay as well and you can live there. Until the time comes, and that's really the big change there. For the trail, like Dave said, we've met multiple times. Jerry Hale and Mike Berg Pride met 10 years ago on it. And it's our property. We said, yep, it's a great idea. Let's try and make it work. We put together an easement, agreed to it. It is what it is. The language, we want it to work. We want it to work where it is. We've offered our services with Mike Berg today and to try and get this approved through Eagle. That's the best place for the trail. I think you're away from Bowes Road. You're away from the people. You're really away from a lot of the mining operations. And we've said, if all goes well, we get the approval, we'll go in there and we'll, once we get an excavator over there, we can dig some holes on the south side that give a much better idea opposed to six-inch floorings. And if the ground isn't saturated with gravel that far south, we're not going to dig fill sand to make the lake bigger. We'll just move the lake shore a little bit to the north. Now you have to move your trail. But until we get an excavator out there to do that, we can't just automatically say, yep, we're going to give up the gravel. It's not great. Then we totally change this and, well, can you go get an excavator up and out? It costs a lot of money to just move an excavator around and start digging holes and bailing gravel. So we wanted to work with them. I think we've had multiple meetings where we showed good faith. We will, in good faith, try and make a route, but just automatically say, if this easement doesn't work, we're going to grant you permission to run it perpendicular or parallel to Bowes Road. Is it fair to develop our business in the area, especially zone industrial? We don't want to have, the worst thing that could happen is having this trail and it'll have a crosswalk across the access to our gravel pit where there's double bottomed gravel trades. There's people getting loaded with pickup trucks. There's people getting loaded with trailers. And they come out of this gravel pit. And some of the people that are going to use this trail will be little kids and such. And I'd never live myself if a gravel train then, you know, took a life. That's where I'm at with that. And we're going to work as hard as we can and hopefully make it work on the south side. But that's going to where we are with the trail.
James, a real quick question. I'm sure there'll be others here, but what's your timeline for starting the project? Assuming that we go through here.
We would start immediately. We already put silt fence in. We have brush hogged it. But we didn't want to go in last year and strip topsoil when we didn't have the Eagle permits and the groundwater discharge. Like Dave said, Eagle was taking quite a long time to do stuff. So to us, why move a bunch of dirt and then have a dust storm with no activity going on? And we're not digging the lake. There's no point in creating that headache. So we now, and the equipment that we are going to use was backordered seven months. Now it's ready to ship. So we started.
So you're ready, Eagle, basically?
Now we have all our permits. We'll have a bond into seven. Had them write the bond because they don't want to start paying for a bond until we're going to start moving dirt.
How long before you would be able to answer the question that Dave has? Roughly. And I'm not going to hold you to it. I'm just looking at general parameters.
In the fall, we'd have a good idea, at least on the west side of the property. And that, we think that tells a lot. And we've done other properties where you dig large lakes and it affects the hydrology and the geology of the river. Where you create a ton of flood space, right, in capacity, which then could make where the trail is staked right now drier because now you have a lot more air capacity where that river's going. So that water. So that's, would be our home if we can get by with Eagle with a little bit of bill and a little bit of the hydrology changing because the lake, which is again approved through Eagle now.
Right.
That could work.
My reasoning there was that if they're not even looking at starting the project until 2023 and if you have some thought pattern in the fall that you can advise them, then it gives Dave a little bit more whippable room with Eagle, maybe. I mean, it might help their thinking.
Yeah. They knew all this, so.
Could Eagle be almost waiting for the hydrology difference? If I was Eagle, I'd be like, I want to see that pond in there before I make any major decisions. I mean, that's going to, I'm thinking it's a no-brainer. It's going to dry out everything. It's going to give, it's going to bonus that more flood area than the lake.
Yeah.
You know, it's going to reduce the flood area, I guess.
Yep. Increase the capacity for it.
Another question that occurred to me and that has to do with the two houses. You own both of those houses.
Correct.
And they are on leases, I assume, on one year or one month or?
They're just renewed months and months. The people that have been in the duplex have been there for.
Ever.
Yes.
So you can effectively end that lease at any time, basically?
Yeah, just would rather give them.
Oh, yeah.
Property.
Yeah. You're not in a hurry to kick them out, but on the other hand, when the time has come.
That's good. As long as we give them, you know, a good amount that we feel comfortable doing.
On the flip side, I just don't want them to come back and say, hey, they're building, you know, they're ruining my life or, you know, whatever. And you own the property anyway, so you have that right to do that anytime.
So I would count, I would count a deep ditch that close to the river and try to make things out locally. Because you're basically, I mean, you have an upward groundwater gradient, assuming that the river's gaining river. So if you intersect the water table that close to the river, you're just basically going to rise to an equilibrium level right near the river. So you'll gain some capacity in that you'll have that volume to bank over your lake before you flood over the river. But it's not maybe as great as you think.
But you're just seeing like versus Lake and Northern Drive, that hydrology changed significantly and that's right next to the Grand River.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think.
Similar proximity and floodways. Not saying that it's going to.
Yeah, I mean, what's the distance between the south bank of the lake and the river?
I could tell you. I have to talk about that.
It's probably, you know, a football field or two or so.
All about, yeah.
So, but that aside, I was going to say that your model, the floodplain model that they'll run, you can run that with and without a lake, you know, the capacity there. Because those models are based on bathmetric and total graphic profiles. And then you run it based on your stream gauge information up and downstream. And you basically calculate the cross-sectional area and the volume of water that passes through each cross-section. It's not like a volume. It's a cross-sectional area and summarize that. So they don't be able to get at that, but I was just thinking that you might be able to do something creative with your trail if you didn't create a totally, you know, it looks like there's like an eight, seven-foot-tall berm or something trail is built on? Or is it, if you made it more of a boardwalk or something?
Well, the major funder for this is MDA and MDA is, they'll tell you they're in the transportation business, not the trail business. So when we build boardwalks with MDA money, they have to be 14-foot wide and they have to be able to carry the weight of an emergency vehicle. So these things are monsters. So they're really expensive, upwards of a thousand bucks or so. It's just like building a bridge. So we're going to try and minimize that. There may be a wet area or two that we can, you know, that we have to elevate. But we don't need to get into the cross-section a little bit. We're going to try, like saying to Dave, we're going to try and fill as much as we can without touching regularly. Get it, get up as high as we can. My concern long-term, again, because I live here and I can't hide from it, is that I don't want, I want it to have some integrity too. I want this base to be firm enough so that it's not going to fall apart and we have to pay and redo it every year. So I think right now we just don't have enough data. And James, again, has offered to provide us the data as it becomes available. I think we've waited this long. We may have to wait a little longer to get an answer and look at the rest of the trail design. We're just asking, and he's said so in public here, not on television cameras. So if we get to a point where we've got any wiggle to move north that would help us with the permitting, then we'll be asking for that and keeping an eye on what he has available to do there. And then if we get totally shut down, we'll be back here anyway, you know, trying to figure out. As my wife said, when all the planning we've done, we shouldn't just go like a skyway over the whole community. We'd be done by now. Probably would travel. Right, exactly. Just one great thing, just wave as we go by.
Sending for the surge.
Yeah.
It's another option.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Any other public comments, by the way? Thanks, James.
I have no questions.
Sure.
I live across the street at 2175 Bowes Road. And I was mostly interested where the entrance pit's going to be.
Sir, can you please give us your name and address?
Charlie Whaley, 2175 Bowes Road.
This thing isn't having much. What are the commissioners showing that?
Yeah, we got Angie in this one.
It's on the west portion of the property. Sir, you okay?
Um, yeah, and then I had one more question too.
Sure.
Will you have lighting at night?
No.
Okay.
Not proposed.
No. Not okay. We, nor noise. When we approved this last time, we went into major depth of the entrances and exits and road conditions. And we really spent a lot of time and concentration to the houses around it.
Left turn only on Bowes Road, so it goes out immediately to M21. So it's, there's nothing going down Bowes Road specifically. I mean, it's right there at the curve.
Yep.
So it's a left turn only coming out of their operation.
Even hours of operation too.
Yes, yes. Hours of operation and noise of.
We did go out to the pit they have over on Five Mile. And it was quiet, I mean, a lot quieter than I thought it was going to be. So until you go and listen to the machinery running, you don't realize, you assume it's loud. It wasn't at all. So.
And you've got how many condos over there around that?
Yeah. So, yeah, there's over 100. Yeah. Built in size.
More being built, as I recall.
Yeah.
Thank you for your question, though.
Any other questions from the commission? Then the number 14 and 15 for approval, I guess I don't see much difference here. And I know I'm missing that. So I would need some.
Bruce, I could just.
Sure.
Spoke with our attorneys and they didn't have any fear over 14 or 15, so.
Either one.
I just don't want that to hold up.
Right.
The commission tonight.
Yeah.
Obviously, I think 15 makes more sense to me, but.
Yeah. Dave, which one makes more sense to you? Come to think of it.
Either way, it comes down to we have to find a mutually agreeable.
Exactly.
Space, so.
There's a must versus a.
Yeah.
But if one is agreeable to us, it's the same thing. Like I said, we want it to make it work.
But I don't want the trail, but I have a hard time telling a company they must, we give up property, they must.
And that's 15.
Yeah. I want the trail.
Right.
The, I think 14 was the stricter.
14, yeah.
To. It said, the applicant shall cooperate to modify the alignment to a mutually agreed upon. Whereas the other one said, if a new route can be mutually agreed to, applicant will grant said route. I agree with James. Either way, because attorneys are okay, I prefer 14. But not with the intent that we're going to use it to leverage those cooperation. I think.
I think Tony.
It's going to work or it's not.
I just think 14 doesn't make a, how do you force somebody to be mutually agreeable? It doesn't. That's why I rewrote it for, I suggest a 15.
Tony, I think you're right. 15 would be the better.
That's why.
I just didn't see it. I read it four times in the book, couldn't make up my mind, so.
Well, that's something too, is Illinois, and Andy doesn't add things unless it's all thought out.
Right.
So I kind of agree with David on 14. I just want to make sure that this trail gets in done. We've worked way too long. Too much money's been spent. We as a city and the township.
And we got to have it go between the river and the pit.
Yep. And we've made sure that the rest of the funding got taken care of so we can keep moving on. So I am very highly motivated to make sure it gets done. So I like 14.
Commissioners, any thoughts on it? Anybody else? Andy?
Andy did speak with the city attorney. She was good with both versions. I know Andy's preference is 14. You know, can't speak for him exactly why, but then he thought it was a little bit more straightforward and direct than the other option.
I would trust Andy, I guess. I mean, he's, he's thinking.
They've sat here a long time and when Andy has put something in front of us, I want to really pay attention to it. Because he's worked all, he's worked it, so.
Well, even in 14 there though, it says the applicant shall cooperate with the city to modify the alignment to a mutually agreed upon location as needed. So even if it has to go elsewhere, it's there. It's a possibility. So if everybody feels comfortable with 14, then we'll just go with 14 as the acceptable. And as far as the two houses go, those are on leases. They're in control of that anyway. There's no reason for us to oppose it. If the houses make the decision to stay, they stay. If they want to leave, they leave. So I don't think that that's.
They'll leave when it gets stored up?
Right, yeah. I don't, I mean, I don't think we should be a concern of ours.
Well, and it does make sense for you to have an employee living in one, which you can eye on the pit. You've got somebody that can be there in moments' notice if at night an issue arises. So I think that's a great idea in the use of the property. The other people, they probably just. They won't leave.
Yeah.
I'd like to make the.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
There is one more condition Andy suggested regarding, it just clarifies the residential occupancy may continue. If they do that, they should submit an updated site plan that illustrates the revised locations of the burbs.
Okay, we don't have that.
Got it.
15, right?
Yeah, it was inserted between.
Yeah, see, we don't have it on our, on our study. So, so they give you 24 total? And 19 now becomes the residential? And read that for us one more time because we may not even need it.
The residential occupancy of parcels, and it lists the address and parcel numbers, may continue. If this residential use is to continue, the applicant shall submit an updated site development plan that illustrates the location of revised berm locations around these two properties.
That makes sense.
That, yeah, that makes sense. So it would be.
Yeah, I mean, you need to have a site mix up, draw and modify. We can do that.
Okay.
We're going to strip the topsoil from the south to the north, build a berm.
Right.
So just instead of going all the way to where the proposed was, stop short of the.
They would likely be temporary anyway.
Yeah.
We've already got the full-time berm there in the original, so we don't need, we don't need 19. Scratch 19. Back to 23. I will make the motion that we accept a special land use reapplication with the findings. And the findings go actually through 23, I believe it is, conditions of approval. One through 23 and then the findings we've already approved. So I would make that recommendation. Is there a second?
A second.
And is there further discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Plight.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Dodula.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff report. Sue, anything?
No, I have nothing further.
Fine. Nathan?
Nothing else.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate you going. Michael?
Kids are going to be dressed up for the cookie walk this weekend, so we're going to have some string, but.
We got cookies, man. It's going to be clever.
We're ready.
Two bags.
There you go. David?
Good.
Fallon?
No. All right. I like Mike's, had cookies playing this weekend. One of the stops is going to be on the showboat, so if you buy a bag, there's 10 different places. You get a tour of the showboat too, and you'll be able to pick up your cookie on there.
What's this cookie thing about?
Yeah. So we're, the money is going to, it's a fundraiser that the Chamber and the merchants all got together to do. And it's a fundraiser, so the money's going to be raised for the Wildlife Center here. And they're going to be the recipient of the money this year. So it's fun. We sell 100 bags. You get 10 homemade cookies. They're large cookies. If you've ever been in my store during an event, she sells the cookies out of my store during big events. So you really get 100 dozen cookies.
So walk around.
Yeah, you get a bag, get a cookie passport. Tells you where to go.
Walk around, eat cookies?
Yep.
Trick or treat?
Yep.
Well, you need a bag if you can eat them from start to stop.
Well, Mike's kind of hoping his kids don't eat them all, so he can take some. But this is, I think this is the third year, fourth year we've done it. During COVID, we did it Alpha. We did drive-through down there and it was wildly successful.
Tony?
I'm good.
Come on in.
I'm good as well.
And I am good. It's nice to be back. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Chair Barker, I do have one more thing.
Yeah.
Sorry. I did speak with Dave Simmons from Lowell Tompkins in regards to the joint planning permission meeting. And they are wanting to hold it there at their place just to get things up and started again. And then we can alternate throughout the years. He is looking at May 23 or. He is looking at May 23 or June 27.
Or June 27?
Mm-hmm. They're both the fourth Monday of each month.
23, I would go for May, but.
Memorial Day must be on the 30th then?
Yeah.
23, I would not be able to do that. Which.
It would be at night, right?
Yes, 7:00.
What was the other date?
June 27.
Mike, 27, which is May?
27th of June. At Lowell Township?
Yes.
You'll send out a notice on.
I will.
Uh, we would like to invite the city manager as well as the city council to that. Well, non-envoy cancels the first one, so not necessary. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I would adjourn.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.